Yeah, Paul's gonna do it.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular town council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 19th due to the holiday yesterday. Our first item is a pledge of allegiance.
Counselor Cocken.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Town Clerk?
Counselor Drake.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Cocken.
Here.
Counselor Manusov.
Here.
Counselor McAllister will not be here tonight. Counselor Montaneri.
Here.
Counselor Roberts.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Consul.
Present.
And Chairperson Hammond.
Here.
Thank you.
First item is a presentation by the MDC in regards to the Yukon Mansfield water proposal.
Thank you.
Attorney Stone is here.
Thank you, Emir Hammond. It's good to see you. Thank you to the councilors for inviting me here tonight or having me here tonight at our request. It's an important topic that's been in the press over the past several weeks or months, in fact, and I thought it, we thought it was an opportunity to meet with you tonight to give one of our member towns, the legislative body within our member towns, an update as to where we are and what prompted this whole proposal in the first instance. Before I get into that, I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of you in the town of Weathersfield for your support of the Clean Water Project referendum last November 2012. It was a solid victory for the referendum and we couldn't have done it without the help of people like you, so thank you for that, for that help. Back in the spring of 2011, the Connecticut Council on Environmental Quality sent out a request for an EIE, an environmental impact evaluation, for the potential of bringing water from another water basin within the state of Connecticut to the University of Connecticut in the town of Mansfield. There was clearly demonstrated a need for an additional water source, resource in that area. There's an insufficient supply of water now. There would be even more significant insufficient supply of water should expansion at Yukon and a proposed tech park in Mansfield come about. In response to that EIE, there were several proposals, one by a private company, two others by two public companies. We were asked by one of the private companies to supply them water so that they could then supply a portion of that water in their proposal to the University of Connecticut. We declined the offer to provide them water for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is concerns with our tax exempt status on our bonds to sell water to a private company who would then sell it at a higher rate to another end user. But we're asked at the time, this now fast forward to June, July of 2012, we were asked directly by the EIE consultant to submit a proposal. We had not solicited to be involved in the EIE, but were asked if we had available water to perhaps sell to one of the participants, would we have available water to sell directly to the university and to the town of Mansfield? That's our genesis, our start of this very accelerated, at least for us, very accelerated process. We put together a proposal. We looked at our water resources, our available water resource. We have 12, up to 12 million gallons of water a day that is available to us, unused but available for sale to other customers. As we develop other customers, as we develop new customers, the effect is significant not only on, for those customers who would experience or be able to take advantage of one of the lowest water rates in the state, but will also have an effect on our existing customers, including customers within the town of Weathersfield. It would certainly have the effect of stabilizing our rates, perhaps even have an effect of lowering our rates. The more customers we have, the better off we all are. And that's of water that's already available. We don't have to do any more well drilling, for example. We don't have to build any new reservoirs. That water's there. It's part of our reservoir system up at Neepawg and Barkhamsted. It's part of our transmission system from those reservoirs to our treatment facilities in Bloomfield and West Hartford, and it's therefore part of our distribution system within our eight-member towns and some ancillary towns surrounding the district itself. So, we submitted the proposal. They called for anywhere between 1.2 and 3 million gallons a day, which is well within our 12 million gallons available. We submitted our proposal and we did get, as you may have read, some pushback from areas to the west, in particular individuals who now access the west branch of the Farmington River for recreation and for economic, economic growth or economic activity. The primary steward of the west branch, in addition to the MDC, and Commissioner, I'm sure you're aware of this as a, as a former member, is the Farmington River Watershed Association. Back in 1998, 99, they signed an agreement with the MDC, recognizing that we had available water, recognizing that that available water or the use of that or sale of that water would not have any effect on the west branch. They acknowledged that we, they would not object to any further sale of water within our safe yield, this 12 million gallons per day, to areas outside our member towns. They have been silent on this proposal because they signed an agreement to be silent, to not object. That's a steward of that river, of the west branch, of the Farmington, and they've recognized that we have that water available to us. So, there's been some concern. We've tried to address that concern. We held a forum out in Farmington back in January on the issue. We've participated in forums that have been sponsored by the University of Connecticut. I wouldn't suggest that we've answered all the, or at least, I think we've answered all of them. Whether they think it's a satisfactory answer to that, I won't speculate to guess. But we've, we've at least attempted to get our message out that the sale of this, or 25% of this available resource would not have any negative impact on the west branch of the Farmington River. We've moved it along. The EIE comment period expired on January 31st. We've submitted our comments and we've submitted, and it's part of our website, the documents which are in front of you, the, what we call frequently asked questions about our proposal. It's been updated through today, and there's also an introduction from us as to the background and where we stand in terms of the other, the other participants in the EIE. I'm not sure at this point, particularly given the governor's recent announcement of investing or a proposal to invest another $1.5 billion in the University of Connecticut, including stores, Stanford, and I believe the Groton campus, whether this EIE is, needs to be updated, it needs to be expanded to include that additional development. That's not a decision that we would make, but it's something that we may participate in, should the EIE be expanded in scope to include that additional development. I'm here tonight to answer any questions you might have, recognizing that what we thought at one point in 1988, we thought that in 2000, by 2012, we would be selling 100 million gallons of water a day. In fact, even though our customer base has maintained at around 390,000 customers, our water consumption has gone down from 70 million, just under 70 million gallons per day in the late 80s to just under 50 million gallons of water a day now. And it's not because, as I said, we have less customers, it's because conservation efforts have led to a significant reduction, for, for all good reasons, a significant reduction in water consumption. It has led to additional safe yield that the MDC has to sell. I think it's quite frankly, and this is personal, not an MDC position, but we have an obligation to use that very important state asset as best we can for the benefit of our member towns, our existing customers, but also to, for areas of the state that don't have the water supply that we, you and I, I live in East Hartford, have enjoyed since 1929. That water supply being those two reservoirs, which have a total of about 42 billion gallons of water at any given time within their, within their, those two areas. So, it's an obligation we feel we had to at least participate in the EIE process when called upon. Whether or not we're successful will be determined by others, but again, we felt it important to, to participate. So with that, I'll answer any questions which anyone might have.
Councillors have questions? Counselor Manusov?
Yeah, so I, I think I support this project, but my question is, this is a revenue opportunity for the MDC. So, to the extent that, that offsets more than the marginal cost of bringing that line up there, does that mean member towns would benefit by lower rates, so?
Yeah, that's probably a lot more simply put than I just laid it out. That's exactly correct. First of all, the capital cost would be borne by the state of Connecticut. Under our charter, we have the authority to bring water or supply water to state facilities, but the state must pay the cost for the capital improvement to bring the water to those state The more water we sell, the per unit cost to provide that water decreases. We have the capacity to provide, and this is not in the proposal, up to 5 million gallons per day, hydraulically, from our terminus point in the East Hartford-Manchester town line out to Yukon. Not 10, not the whole 12, we're limited to five. They've asked for proposals between 1.3 and 3 million gallons per day. But aptly put, the more we sell, that's available. We're never going to do anything that's going to risk our core mission, which is to provide eight-member towns a sufficient amount of potable water for our existing customers and any potential development that might occur. But as we see a reduction in the use of water, whether through conservation, through a reduction or lack of development, Pratt Whitney, for example, in 1990, was using 10 million gallons of water a day, one customer. They're at three presently. But we, we understand our core mission is to make sure that towns like Weathersfield and the other seven-member towns should have and will have a sufficient amount of water regardless.
So, is there any idea that, what the potential savings could be? I mean, in your public relations campaign, I think that might be helpful for the people to know or understand.
It's, it's hard to say, to put an exact number on it. I've heard estimates from, you won't see increases in rates for some time, to it may mean a reduction rate by about 20%. So, there is that range. I will tell you this, absent additional customers, you'll see, and you've seen, last year was a 3.5% increase in the water rate. In our non-member towns, the rate has gone up significantly. Your customer service charge that you pay, that I pay, has gone from $15 per quarter to $39 per quarter. It's because there's not as much water being sold. Our bonding, our rating agencies, which you have to deal with all the time, have said you need to put some of your fixed cost in revenue sources that are concrete, that we know are going to be stable, and you're going to realize that at revenue on a month-to-month, quarter-by-quarter basis, without relying upon how much water people use. It's too variable a factor. So, we've shifted some of our administrative costs, our overhead costs, from the water rate to the customer service charge, just by way of example. So, again, the more we sell, even an impact on, to that extent, your customer service charge may go down as well. There's more people paying in.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Over, over like, let's say, just a couple of questions. Over like a 30-year period now, Pat history, has there been any times where the MDC has run into an issue with, you know, water shortages during any drought or anything like that?
In, in, the short answer is no. The manner in which the DPH determines safe yield is based upon a 100-year drought. That's an engineering standard. You may have heard it in the contrary, the 100-year storm, where you protect against stormwater and drainage. This is the opposite. This is the 100-year drought. That drought would, that would occur once every 100 years. That's the DPH standard, and that's how they have, every other water company in the state determines how much water they have available after meeting that one and 100-year drought. The MDC goes by a different standard, and it's not because we're better than any, but it's just a standard we've used. We've used it before DPH put in their 100-year drought, and we continue to use it today. It's a one and 150-year drought, so it's a more significant event, therefore a more stringent requirement, and it's based upon a drought that occurred in 19, I was, let's see, seven or eight years old at the time, I don't remember, but it occurred in 1966, 67. That was a very significant drought that the state of Connecticut under, experienced, and it's the one and 150-year drought. That's our standard. We have not seen, we have had, and our neighbors have seen it, in Manchester in 2011, there was a, they experienced a shortfall in their reservoir where they were about 70% full. When you get to 85% full in your reservoir, DPH says, start conserving. No mandatory conservation, but you have to start giving out advisories that you're getting paresely close to not having enough water for fire, safety, et cetera. When you get to 65%, then you go into mandatory conservation. They were about 70, and they had called us. We have an emergency connection with Manchester. Call, I think you were there, Commissioner.
Yes.
Or at least you knew about it. They, they said, we may need water from MDC. And that's where the state steps, steps in, and regardless of our charter or anything else, if, if an area needs water, you're, we're going to provide them water. So, other water companies, both public and private, have had that, close to that experience. We have none.
And the other question. I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Usually that's my phone going.
The other question was, I know when I, when I read all the information in our council packet, they talked about a, basically a 16-inch transmission line that would go up to Mansfield area, and I know we just discussed before the meeting that, I thought maybe a dual, a dual line, two 16-inch lines, even if you don't use one redundant type, would that be something that the MDC would consider doing?
Well, redundancy is important, and particularly when you're in a state highway, if you're going to dig one trench or a trench for a, what is a 17.4-mile run, it may, it, it's proper planning to anticipate, particularly, just two weeks ago, the governor proposed another 1.5 billion. Who knows where we'll be, you know, 10, 20 years down the road, to build that redundancy because you don't want to tear the road up again, certainly not for 17.4 miles. So, I, I think that's something we would consider. Remember, you're, you're paying for the cost of pipe.
I understand.
All the mobilization issues, the trench issues are all pretty much taken care of, and you don't have to build that much bigger of a trench to put another 16-inch line. You can do it side-by-side or you can do it top-to-bottom, north-south, so it's certainly something we look at. Just one, one note on that trench, on that trench thing, I'll be very brief. We have three, people, some people say, geez, water, when I first thought of it, water all the way out from East Hartford to Yukon, that's a long way. Well, if you go by, on 384 to 44 to 195, a road which I traveled for four years, you know, many years ago, it's 17.4 miles. Our transmission mains from our reservoirs in Barkhamsted and Neepawg, three of them, built in the 20s and 30s, technology wholly different than where we are now, and mostly all within private lands, no state or public rights of way, 18 miles long, each. If they could do it then, we certainly can do it now.
Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Other councillors, Counselor Drake and then.
Do you need a pump at the Mansfield? That's, that's.
We'll need two or three pumps along the way. You, you, I'm sure many of you have traveled the route. It's hilly, and it's a forest line, it's a high-pressure line, and you're going to put pumps at the, you know, the toe of the mountain, of each hill, and you're going to fly it over.
Does that go into the, everybody's rate, the cost of running the pumps, or do they get a special charge?
It costs, it costs the state of Connecticut. They probably.
They'll actually run the pumps too? I'm not talking about putting, I'm not talking about operating the pumps.
We would operate them. We would maintain and operate.
Would we pay for electricity?
We'd pay for electricity, electricity. Once we, as you know, even within Weathersfield, we build a, or developer builds a water main, whether it be within a subdivision or in a public street somewhere, what have you. We take great care in how that's constructed, and at the end of the day, who has access to it and how you gain access, because what, you know, the integrity of the pipes, not so much on the sewer side, but certainly on the, on the water side, the potability of that water is a large part contingent upon what can get in and what can get out. So, we want to own the line once it's constructed. We want to maintain the lines once they're constructed, constructed. We have over 24 pump stations throughout the district that we maintain. It's not an exorbitant cost. There is some electrical cost, as you pointed out, but the ongoing maintenance with the state-of-the-art of these pump stations nowadays is relatively small, but we want to control that investment.
Just my last question, it's more of a curiosity, does, do non-members pay more than members for the same services?
They pay the same amount for the water. The water rate is uniform throughout the district, but they, but they pay.
I'm just curious, why would that be?
They pay additional charges, non-member rates, a surcharge, the, for example, the customer service charges for non-member town customers is $105 a quarter, yours is $39 a quarter. So, at the end of the day, their bill for the same amount of water is higher, so it's not the same. We, we have to charge a uniform rate, but then we have those other.
And why do you have to charge, I'm just curious, why do you have to charge?
Because our, our charter and the state statute provides that.
Because it seems to me, the eight-member towns, we made the investment for years and paid for it, why should other people pile in without us getting, you know, kind of.
It's interesting that you should bring that up because, in a little different vein, but along the same theory, there's a bill in the legislature where, that's submitted by a representative from Glastonbury, who hasn't, a town which has not put in the investment that Weathersfield has for a number of years, decades, who didn't put that investment or didn't have the foresight back when to join the district or to participate in all the, the debt that we've incurred to improve our system, to have what I consider to be, and I'm being very, you know, selfish perhaps, but one of the best water systems in the country, didn't put in that investment, but wants a seat on our board to vote on our budget in, both on the water and the sewer side. So, my argument against that piece of legislation is pretty much what you just said, Councilman Drake, is you have not made the investment.
West Hartford reservoir, we had that issue with the legal issue of being sued. I just, I just remember the hearing, you had all these people from Avon complaining that they wouldn't be able to walk on that we're paying for. I mean, they don't contribute anything, they wanted to walk on what we pay for. It's an unfairness.
And guess, and guess what, Councilman, when, with that judgment is under appeal, but should that judgment ever be quote-unquote final, it went to the Supreme Court last week, if that judgment were to become final, they're also not going to participate in paying that judgment either. This is the judgment of the lawsuit that led to that hearing you're talking about.
Counselor Cocken.
The agreement that you're talking about, excuse me, is it finite or is it infinite? I mean, if you reached this agreement and you started supplying Mansfield and Yukon, does it, would it go for forever, basically?
It's going to at least, it would at least go through the payment of the bonds, which is about a 30-year bond. But I, I will tell you, you know, with all that's going on out there, to be honest, whomever gets, whoever the chosen option is, whichever the chosen option, options, they're going to provide water to that area for some period of time. They're not drilling, drilling, excuse me, any more wells up in Mansfield. The wells they have, the Willimantic Wells and the Fenton River Wells have run dry before. They're of limited capacity. The, the issue more for that area is who controls the water resource, rather than where the water resource comes from. They're going to need water. Theirs is, theirs is more of a proprietary issue as to who controls it once it gets there.
I was actually looking, pardon me, in, in reverse, pardon me, what if you ended up getting all kinds of demand and you didn't, you know, 30 years from now, you didn't want to supply Yukon anymore, would you be able to, you know, once the bond's paid off, sever the agreement?
Because it's a state institution, I, I think we'd have a hard time severing that relationship. So, it, I mean, in, in my years, I've been at the district for 25 years, I know a little bit about the history of the district. We've had it at any given time, one or more of our towns are somewhat disgruntled with the MDC. For example, we have an ad valorem rate on our sewer, which is based upon the grant list. Sometimes, you know, the Hartford grant list is the leader, and they pay more on the ad valorem for their sewers than, say, Windsor. Other times, West Hartford is the leader on the grant list development, and they pay more than the other towns for their sewer. Same on a sewer, I mean, same sewer system, sewage system. And so, there's been talk, for example, out of West Hartford for, when those times come, when they're spending more, paying more, for a sewer user charge and things like that. So, we've had issues. We had issue, Councilman Drake brought up, the use of the reservoirs out in West Hartford. We had an issue about whether our legal liability outweighed the value of the asset as a recreational facility. We had that debate. I think we ended that debate on the right side of the issue, but we had the debate. And there was a great deal of discussion amongst our member towns, some saying, look at, we're not, we're not in the recreation business, we're in the water sewer business, why do we keep it open at all? That was very, very much considered by some members of the MDC board and some member towns. So, we've had those debates. They've been a, healthy debates, and they're things that we should reconsider and look at as time goes by. I've never had the situation where it's come to my, at least to my attention, that one or more of our towns want to get out. And, and I was asked to give a legal opinion about how you get out. There's nothing in our charter about how you get out. So, I assume that the way you get out is the way you get in, that if you wanted to sever your ties to the district, not only do you have to vote as a body, I'm not suggesting Weathersfield would do this, but vote as a legislative body as a town, perhaps by referendum, and then you'd have to get approval from the other towns within the MDC to get out. It's very unlikely that that would happen.
But the, the stores or Mansfield would not be, they wouldn't be a member.
They would not be members.
So, back to the, back to the original question, we, you, you're treating this as if, if you did it, it's probably there for, forever. I mean, while maybe legally that, somewhere down the road it could happen, but your, your mindset is that this is a permanent arrangement?
My mindset is that it'd be permanent. They would be subject to an agreement which could include an out. We had an agreement with CRA, for example, lasted 26 years, but it expired. It could have been extended. We have an agreement with Portland that has a way for either side to get out. So, I'm sure that agreement, Councilman Cocken, would have a similar provision. It may be a longer notice term, for example, maybe a five-year notice term so that there's some way to get other water there, but there would be some, I just wouldn't know, begin to guess as to what that provision would be at this point.
Thank you.
Counsel Robert.
I might have missed this in the information you provided. What's the timeframe for this?
Well, we, we thought that the comment period was going to end in mid-December. It was extended to the first week in January, then extended to the end of January. There's been a, a, a whole bunch of questions and comments raised through the EIE process. They're going to take the time to respond to each and every question and post the answers to those questions on their, on the EIE website. I would say that's a three-to-four month period. The, they will report, the EIE consultant will report to the Commission on Environmental Quality, which is a state agency. They will then make a recommendation, then goes to OPM, who's going to be the final arbiter or decision-maker on where the water should come from, fall 2012 at the earliest, is my guess. And then if they expand it, Councilwoman, if they expand it to include this $1.5 billion, which is a proposal, there's no bonding authorization or approval on that yet, question whether they may reopen it to perhaps look for proposals that will provide enough water to support that use as well. So, that may extend it even longer, but I think end of summer, early fall would be a, a good timeframe to look at.
Thank you.
And that wasn't in your materials, so.
Okay.
I do have a question, Chris. In lieu of what's happening at the state level when you look at the pilot grants, so I see pilot as payment to communities for commodity, building, land, whatever. I would see this in a similar fashion, water as the commodity. Is there a chance that the state would not pay for this commodity in the future? So, that's going to, well, I think it's, the pilot is in lieu, you know, payment in lieu of taxes.
Right.
And understand that they're going to be paying for, quote, water, to be delivered because it's also a commodity. Would there be a potential for that to be, for them to say, no, we're not going to support that?
Well, yeah.
Or is that going to be built into the?
We're a municipality, especially a chartering corporation, we don't get state pilot money, we're not part of any state pilot computation or calculation, we never have been, I don't anticipate that we ever will be. We're extraterritorial, we go beyond, you know, one town's boundaries in terms of size, but we're limited in terms of scope. We provide certain identified services and that's it. I cannot envision, it's a, it's a thoughtful point, but I just cannot envision where they would substitute a pilot payment to us.
No, I'm not saying that they would substitute a pilot payment because they're looking today at taking those pilot payments away.
Away.
From communities, looking at this as a similar or parallel process of saying, okay, they're paying for this commodity and.
Oh, just decide not to pay?
You know, over time, because something happens that they can't afford to pay, that they don't, and so then it has to be absorbed by the member towns.
I, you know, that, that would be, you know, we're very fortunate in the MDC, we have eight towns with very strong legislative delegates. We have eight towns with very strong legislative delegations. It would affect not only the NDC, but our position would be that it affects any commodity that is purchased by the state that they're now not paying for the services that are provided, but rather some arbitrary number, or not paying at all, or not paying at all. I just don't see it happening. Uh, and, and certainly any agreement, if we get that far, we'd work into it, you know, some continuing obligation of the state to pay. We know the state is all-powerful, um, certainly more powerful than the NDC and the town of Weathersfield and all of our eight-member towns put together. But, um, I, I don't think, um, that the state necessarily is in the business of denying a fair, uh, consideration for a needed commodity.
Okay.
Uh, and it's not just the state, it would be also the town of Mansfield, who was a active participant in this process too.
Okay. I just had to ask.
Oh, no, it's a good question.
Go ahead.
So the town of Mansfield, you say in your, in your paperwork, that due to the high pressure, communities along the seventeen-mile route won't have the ability to hook on.
Well, du- due to the high pressure, it would preclude them from hooking, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
But the town of Mansfield will be eligible to sell this as a wholesale or retail?
No.
No?
No. They, it's, it's a, it would be water for the town of Mansfield. For Mansfield residents, I suppose they, they would be distributed through the town of Mansfield. They'd pay us a treated water rate and then it would be part of their distribution system. They're still considering how that distribution system would be maintained and operated. It may be by the, someone like the NDC, may not be. And then they would charge a water rate to recoup their costs.
Is there a max gallons per day that they'll be contracting for?
Well, there's a max gallon per day that we can provide.
Right.
Um, sets the five million gallons per day. Um, again, how that's divided up between, uh, Yukon and Mansfield, it's a better problem to have than what they have now. The problem they have now is they don't have enough water and they're fighting over that limited water resource. Here, they'll have enough water to fight over or to discuss, this, I should put it in more politically correct terms, more water to discuss how to better, best distribute it, but that's a better conversation to have. The max we could provide is five million gallons per day. Our system hydraulically can just not support it through our distribution system to East Hartford. I took more than ten minutes.
Okay, I think there were some good questions.
Thank you so much for the questions, they were very, uh, well-taken and, uh, we'll continue to keep you up, updated as we move forward, either through presentations like this or certainly through emails that we send out through, uh, the town manager and the, and the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, next on the agenda is a presentation in regards to the plan of conservation and development.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Town Councilors. Uh, with me tonight is Glenn Chalder. He is a principal in the planning consulting firm Plan and Metrics. We've retained Plan and Metrics to assist us with the plan of conservation and development process. Uh, Glenn is, uh, going to do the lion's share of this, uh, presentation. Uh, we've got about fifteen, uh, slides, so we're gonna take advantage of the, uh, video capabilities here, um, in the room and, and briefly walk through that with you. You should have received on your desk this evening a copy, um, of the draft plan. Some nice, uh, graphics of, uh, old Weathersfield, Webb Dean Stevens Museum. Uh, we're gonna walk you through the highlights of the plan. Keep in mind, uh, there is a public hearing scheduled for, uh, the plan on April second in this room at seven PM in the evening, which is the official, uh, public hearing scheduled for this. So we're gonna keep our comments brief, uh, try and get out of here in, in ten or fifteen minutes and certainly give you an opportunity, uh, for questions. I'll, I'll hand it off to Glenn right now and we'll try and get the technology, uh, working.
Thank you, Peter. Well, I think this is one of the secret agent movies where the button gets hit and the slide screen drops, et cetera. There we go. Wonderful, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Peter indicated, uh, my name is Glenn Chalder with Plan and Metrics. Had a chance to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, really over the past, uh, year and a bit, if you will, on the plan of conservation and development. Some of you may remember the meeting we had at the community center, um, in terms of, uh, involving the community in the plan of conservation and development. As you're probably aware, Weathersfield has a plan of conservation and development today and in fact started planning with the first plan, which was created for the community in nineteen twenty-eight, with the first community-based plan. I know there was a lot of planning that went on before that. Uh, but a plan of conservation and development is a document adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which identifies the long-term vision for the physical development of the community. And of course, as part of that, it also considers the economic and social development, but primarily it's a document really looking down the road at the community long-term. Um, in terms of preparing the plan, we undertook a three-step process through the public meeting, uh, work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, independent research. We identified issues and visions for the community, um, we formulated strategies and then again, working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, refined those strategies over time. If you take, uh, anything away from the meeting tonight, the first thing I'd like you to take away is that based on all of our research findings and investigation, the public meetings, the telephone surveys, that people feel that Weathersfield is doing a very good job in many different respects. They're very pleased with the community, the quality of life here and the things that are going on. So that should be the first thing that is your takeaway. Um, but they're also recognized that the community is changing in a lot of ways. The age demographics and distribution in the community are changing. Um, our population growth had peaked, declined a little bit, is increasing again, um, there's changes going on. We have a lot of history in the community and we have a history of thinking, uh, for the future. Um, and that's really what the plan of conservation and development is about. The only thing I did want to turn your attention to is in the bottom-left corner of this slide, um, as part of the preparation of this plan, uh, local artist Philip Lohman created these drawings, which are, you'll find in the document, which really look at Weathersfield and its phases of development every fifty years, uh, from sixteen thirty-four through to today. Uh, really a remarkable, uh, contribution as part of the plan. So based on all the work the Planning and Zoning Commission did, the overall vision for the community is really to guide the conservation and development of Weathersfield in ways that will maintain and enhance its character and quality of life. This is what residents indicated was important to them. As we thought through the various elements of the plan or the issues that people were concerned about, there were three main plan themes, uh, which are reflected in the document. The first of which is to maintain the character and the quality of life in the community. Second theme is to guide development and then the third is to address other issues. So in terms of the first theme, I'm just gonna highlight the major findings and if you, uh, have any questions, I'd be happy to go into more detail. Uh, but what residents indicated was important to them was to maintain the character of the community overall. Weathersfield means something to them emotionally and those elements are identified in the plan and it suggests strategies for maintaining community character. It also includes the residential character, the residential neighborhoods in the community, uh, providing facilities for community needs. These are the things that the people treasure about the community. Um, the plan contains recommendations for extending sidewalks and trails and establishing bicycle routes to enhance the quality of life in the community, expanding community events, promoting architectural character, protecting our historic and archaeological resources, cultural resources, we call them, uh, enhancing transit services and also the plan has a section about ways that we can enhance the streets in the community in Weathersfield overall. Uh, the next major theme of the plan is about guiding development and the recommendations in here about encouraging redevelopment, particularly along the Silasstein Highway, the Berlin Turnpike and, and other key sites in the community. Um, there are, uh, plenty of opportunities, uh, for redevelopment to enhance the character and quality of life and services and tax base, um, and the plan suggests that, um, efforts be devoted in those areas. The plan recommends encouraging appropriate business development in the community to meet the needs of residents. Uh, it contains a section about allowing for evolution of the housing stock. What that means is we discovered, looking at the assessor's database in Weathersfield, that the vast majority of houses in town were built in the nineteen fifties, which was at a time when the houses in America were the smallest that they had ever been. It was the post-world war expansion boom. So if you really look at the distribution, uh, of housing sizes, uh, in Weathersfield, um, you'll see that, uh, there's. Chart is on page twenty-seven of the plan, um, identifies the number of housing built, housing units built in different decades and the square footage of those housing units. People's tastes have changed over time. Uh, they are looking for first-floor master bedrooms, they're looking for, um, attached garages, they're looking for expansion of kitchen and other areas. Um, and yet our zoning regulations have stayed fixed in many respects since nineteen twenty-six. So the plan suggests that we look at ways that if we can allow for our housing units to adapt over time uh, to the changing, uh, needs of the community. Um, and the plan also recommends we look at ways to encourage housing diversity overall because as we all live longer and healthier lives, our housing needs are changing. Um, and ways that we might be able to adapt and meet, uh, diverse housing needs. The third major theme of the plan, uh, doesn't have a snappy title, it says address other issues, which, uh, maybe we could find a better strategy or better terminology there. Uh, but the main recommendations here are about protecting natural resources, preserving open spaces, um, managing the roadway system to, uh, enhance the character of the community, supporting farms and farming, sustainability and resiliency, uh, maintaining, enhancing infrastructure and also managing Weathersfield Cove overall. Many of these things are really, uh, enhancements or adaptations, uh, in the community. This is the future land use plan for Weathersfield. It doesn't identify any major changes in the character or the structure of the community. We're really talking about refinements. Weathersfield, again, is doing many things well today. But this map highlights, uh, the green areas or areas which are open space or preserved. Uh, the yellow and tan areas are residential neighborhoods. The red and purple areas are commercial and industrial areas. This really reflects the current pattern of development in the community and the current pattern of our zoning regulations as well. And the two maps on the right-hand side reflect the regional and state plan of conservation and development and we, our overall pattern is consistent with their ideas and visions for Weathersfield as well. Now, the key to any plan, as you well know, is plan implementation. And so the plan contains recommendations, uh, through these implementation tables about who could be responsible for implementing the various elements of the plan and it suggests strategies, again, uh, about how that can happen. And finally, the public hearing on the plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled for April two, uh, in, in this room, uh, seven o'clock. Um, so people are encouraged to come and provide additional comments, et cetera. Uh, and I think the council certainly has an opportunity to submit those comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, if there's any comments, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions, comments? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
It's nice to see the product come together.
Yes, thank you. Well, thanks for your help and every.
Pete, Peter, suppose you, now that we have this plan, then I assume you're gonna adopt it, but where do you go to actually implement something like this, something as big as this? What, what, do you actually gonna put something together to, to give us some steps, how to?
We, um, one of the recommendations in the plan is that, um, unlike, uh, previous efforts, um, there's a suggestion that we form, um, a plan of development implementation group, uh, consisting of, uh, commission representatives, town staff, uh, to, uh, monitor progress on the various recommendations. If you look closely at the implementation of plan, it, it does recommend, uh, who the agents, uh, of change, uh, who, who the, uh, players are in implementing, who the leader is, who the partners are. So the plan, uh, attempts to get into some of those specific responsibilities. So clearly, all of those folks, the partners and the leaders would be part of an implementation group. We haven't really discussed, uh, the specifics of that, um, you know, whether it would be the council that appoints those or, um, we haven't gotten that far yet, but we would, um, envision that there'd be some entity created to continue to go forward and make sure, whether it's on an annual basis, you know, uh, twice a year, that there is progress being made on the recommendations.
Mike, I was just gonna say, Mike is certain is, you know, we've had Silasstein plans, we have all these plans, but they kinda, obviously they all take big buckets of money and, uh, I guess I'd like to see whatever the implementation is and see how you put stuff together with no money or little money or something like that, you know, else it's not realistic anymore, so.
Certainly, um, with the amount of recommendations and with some of the specifics of those recommendations, uh, the cost is certainly going to be an important factor and how we, uh, address that in these challenging economic times will be part of the solution.
One of the things, not, not to get totally into the details, but you were talking about a village concept between, was it not in Jordan or not in Silasstein?
A town center concept?
Yeah, well, those with parking and, you know, this, now, how do you actually, I mean, it's an interesting concept, I tell you, it's what I like, but how do you actually, let's say, let's do this, what do you, what do you do? I mean, it's no different than the Silasstein Highway plans we've had, but actually I, I like, kinda like that project. But, I don't wanna keep it going, but, but in the same sense, when I was on Planning and Zoning, we had Paul Randazzo come in, who was gonna do something off Silasstein around Jordan Lane. He put together something pretty well. They killed the guy. They beat the guy up so long that the guy just walked away and I just, you know, I just worry about, somewhere along the line, if we have one of these visions, that we figure out a way to actually do it and not beat up everybody on the way, cause I thought what he had put together would have fit into. Soon as I read that, I said, jeez, that's what Paul Randazzo did, asked for it and Planning and Zoning killed the guy. He beat him up so bad, he ended up walking away, couldn't quit, couldn't do it any longer.
Yeah, without getting into the details of his project, it wasn't necessarily, um, you know, that straightforward, there were other issues there, but.
There's no question about it, any of all these things are gonna be, I mean, it was a big plan, big stuff is always issues, so.
Well, you know, first step is to get the Planning and Zoning Commission to buy into it, make it part of, um, you know, the lay of the land and then, uh, figure out specifically how we go for it. I mean, it's gonna be a, a significant partnership with, between the town and, and also the private owners, so, um, to make sure they buy into the concepts as well and, uh, it's certainly not gonna happen overnight.
Okay, thank you. Um, and now, Peter, don't go anywhere. Your economic development report.
You, once again, you should have received your packet, uh, monthly report, February two thousand and thirteen. Uh, unlike, uh, previous reports, this, this attempts to summarize activity from last year. Uh, basically, this, these are, uh, my comments from, uh, the State of the Town Breakfast held a couple of weeks back at the community center with a little bit more detail. Uh, in terms of, um, two thousand and twelve, um, when, when we look back at the activity from last year, uh, some of the highlights here, new business starts. Um, when we look back at previous years, um, considering how economically challenging, uh, the times are, uh, we did remain consistent in terms of, in the number of new business starts. Uh, during two thousand and twelve, we welcomed twenty-eight businesses to Weathersfield and, and it's broken down in some detail, uh, in the report. Uh, happy to answer any questions about that. In terms of building permit activity, uh, the number of building permits has increased by fifteen percent. The total value of the permit activity has increased by eight percent. Uh, and then the leading category, interestingly enough, uh, has been commercial building, renovation and rehabilitation activity. Uh, a few trends in the local residential housing market, uh, this is information provided by some of our local realtors. Um, for the past year, sales were at one of the highest numbers of transactions in the past few years. Prices remained level, the, the number of days a home is on the market was down. Uh, the number of new listings dropped and, and growth in values is anticipated in the, uh, year or two to come. And then lastly, sales prices were closer to asking prices than they've been in some time and from the real estate community's point of view, these are all good indicators of, of things to come. Uh, in terms of the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, they, they report that ninety percent of the applications submitted to them in, in two thousand and two were in fact, uh, approved. Uh, some of the more notable projects were the redevelopment of the Porter and Chester Plaza on the north end of the Silasstein Highway, uh, the approval of the plans for the Kreck Magnet School at the, uh, Northeast Utilities Building. Significant changes to the subdivision regulation, it's the first time that's happened since nineteen sixty-two. And then, uh, as you just saw, uh, we've prepared a draft and spent a good portion of two thousand and twelve working on the plan of conservation and development. In terms of Economic Development Commission activity, uh, it's been a busy year for the facade improvement program. The report lists, uh, about a half dozen projects that were funded, uh, last year. Uh, it's interesting to note, we, we did a, a bit of a financial analysis of the, uh, program. It's interesting to note, we did a bit of a financial analysis of the program to date. To date, we've closed on a total of eighteen projects. When we count up the numbers, we've provided financial assistance to the tune of about five hundred thousand dollars. That amount of public investment, when you count it all up, has resulted in private investment that totals six point six million dollars, and that has increased property values by over three million dollars. So, that program, as you can see from the numbers, is a, is a good financial investment for the town, and we hope to continue that in the years to come. Couple of grants were received over the past year. The farmer's market continues to grow and expand. Another successful holiday social and salute to business event was held by the Economic Development Commission, and they continue to support development activity throughout town. Additionally, the Tourism Commission, as they promote the historic Weathersfield brand, was very busy this, this year, continuing to promote historic Weathersfield. They're working on a couple of new promotional products, some new magazine ads, a new seasonal brochure and rack card. They, they worked quite successfully on a grant from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, so we're in the middle of a planning process for the vacant Masonic Building and the Comstock Ferry property. And just to put a plug in for that project, there is a informational workshop scheduled for Thursday evening, February twenty-eighth, at six thirty P.M. at the Keeney Center on Main Street, to provide kind of a progress and status report for that project. We're about halfway through that planning process to come up with some ideas on how to most successfully renovate the Masonic Building and some of the space at Comstock Ferry. So, if you're available that night, please stop in, find out what's going on with that project, and provide us with some, some input. So, once again, that's February twenty-eighth, that's a Thursday night, six thirty P.M. at the Keeney Center. And then, in closing, the Tourism Commission had a couple of community photo contests. You may have seen some of the submissions. Some of the photos are included in the two thousand and thirteen town calendar, so we want to thank the folks who participated in that, those photo contests. The results were very, very encouraging. In terms of looking ahead to two thousand and thirteen, we continue to be pretty optimistic about the economy improving. There's a number of things already happening that we're pleased to report on. As you know, the town's about to unveil a new town and historic Weathersfield website. We think that's going to be service to both town residents and visitors alike. You may have also heard about the new tenant at the Putnam Park Office Building, the Art Institute. Significant investment is underway, and is, some of it's already been completed in that building, so that's a nice, significant tenant for that office building. We've already got about ten businesses in the permit pipeline, some of them have already opened this year. I haven't included those in my previous statistics, but the, the business starts are already off to a, at a fast pace. You may have noticed improvements underway at the office building at twelve ninety Sylvestine Highway. There are new tenants that are discussing moving into that building, that's also positive. We talked about the plan of development. Obviously, we've all been spending a lot of time on the renovation plans for the high school, and then, we continue to go forward with the implementation of the old Weathersfield master plan. So, we remain, to remain busy, and we're optimistic about the rest of this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about, about the report.
Deputy Mayor and then Councilor Hurley.
Peter, from our talk the other day, could you just, for those who don't know, could you just expand on a little bit what the Art Institute is all about at Putnam Park? Because it's pretty exciting, from what I've read.
Yeah, it's very exciting for the, for the owner. He has spent the last year or so shuffling around some of the existing tenants in the office building in anticipation of this particular tenant. This tenant is a degree granting, I don't know if I want to use the term college, but it's probably appropriate. They have locations across the country. I think the nearest locations are in Boston, and then, I think, another one outside of New York, focusing, as the name implies, on graphic arts, culinary arts, and some other programs. They will have a rather sizable culinary school in the building. At certain times, I think they are discussing having that available to the public, because the students certainly want to, want folks to taste the, the work of the kitchens. But they also have a significant graphic and fine art program as well. So, I'm trying to recall the number of students and the, and the number of employees and teachers there, but the numbers are impressive. I think the investment in the building, they're talking about putting an elevator in there now to accommodate access to the building for the students. So, on balance, it's a significant investment. It isn't nonprofit, so the property is privately held, so the improvements to the building will, in fact, be taxable, unlike other institutions that may be owned by the college itself. So, I think the town manager has, has had the benefit of a tour to learn more about that, and I think we will be talking about maybe doing that as well for the, for the larger community. We're talking about a ribbon cutting. They, they have to go through a state process of certification, so the, they have not been promoting themselves, and they cannot promote themselves because of state statute, but as, as we get closer to that certification, we'll, we'll be sure to schedule an event of some significance to, to announce more details on that.
Thank you, Peter.
Sure.
Councilor Hurley.
It says you had twenty-eight new businesses to town. I know we asked this in the past, how many businesses left town? Do you have an estimate of that, at least?
I can probably go back. There's no process whereby, when a, when a business leaves town, they, they notify us, so it may not be comprehensive, but we can certainly.
All right.
Yeah.
Just want to see what the, if there was a net increase in businesses, or.
Sure.
Any other questions? Councilor Kirkland?
Peter, this may have been in your presentation to the State of the Town, but I'd just be interested in just getting the more specifics on some of the statistics that you were noting about the residential housing market. So, if you could just share the, the details with us, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, one comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to congratulate you on that plan of development, I think it was a great job. And I think some of the things that somebody was mentioning, how, how we can improve things without the public dollars that, that Councilor Drake was talking about, I think we can have a pretty immediate impact on the housing market, just like this, this study shows. And it was very interesting to, to see that the, the number of occupants per household is so much lower now. Two-thirds of, of the town are around two people, and that the, that new homes over the last probably thirty years probably haven't, haven't even come close to what was built in that one decade of nineteen sixty even, which was lower than nineteen fifty. So, I think there's some immediate things that I think we're going to be talking about that we certainly need your input on, and the town managers, on, on how we can improve that housing stock and increase tax dollars to town in a positive way.
And, you know, we, you know, the term quality of life is used throughout the document, and, you know, we, we can't underestimate it nor stress it enough, maintaining quality of life here in the community for, not only the folks who are here now, but the folks who are going to come in the future is, you know, extremely important. So, you'll see that throughout the document, and I know the council has, you know, made it, made it a watchword as well, so.
Anyone else? Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Next on the.
I want to add an agenda item.
Yep.
To, it would be Agenda Item Three D, to waive rental fees for the use of the Showmobile for the Sandy Hook Run for Families.
And can I have a second to add that to the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to public comment, there are no hearings. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak tonight? Mr. Colantonio and then Mr. Wagner.
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, sixteen Morrison Avenue. So far, I think it was a pretty good meeting, very informative between the water and also the land use. But anyway, at one of last year's meeting, I stated that I measured the intersectional side distance for Tipton Road to be two hundred, around two hundred fifty feet. I'm not going to go away, Dave. Which does not meet the town standards for the thirty miles per hour or eighty-fifth percentile speed. I am pleased that on January thirty, though, I saw two town employees taking measurements for the intersectional side distance on Tipton Road. I observed the two gentlemen at work, and when they were done, I asked, what was the measured distance? I was told that the distance was two hundred thirty-two feet in the western direction on Morrison Avenue. This measurement is eighteen feet less than the two hundred fifty feet that I reported. On February twelve, two thousand and ten, the town measured the distance to be three hundred forty feet. Quite a bit of a difference, ninety feet more. The guideline states that for the twenty miles per hour, the required intersectional side distance should be two hundred twenty-five feet, and for twenty-five miles per hour, the distance should be two hundred eighty feet. Again, let me remind the town that the measured distance of two hundred thirty feet does not, let me repeat, does not meet the posted speed of twenty-five miles per hour. It barely meets the two hundred twenty-five feet required for the speed of twenty miles per hour. Let me go back to the yardstick comment, that basically, I really don't know what I'm talking about. But when they were taking a measurement, I saw them taking the measurement along the sideline. The guidelines show that the measurement should be taken along the street line, the street, and not along the, the sideline. Granted, in this particular case, I don't think it's going to make too much difference. It's about less than a foot, but they still made the wrong measurement. In light of the revised information, I hope that the town and the police department will consider the installation of the stop sign or change the posted speed from twenty-five miles per hour to twenty miles per hour and enforce the speed. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my opinion again.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio.
Joel Wagner, live on two oh three Clearfield. It's a pleasure to be back in town. Sorry I missed the last meeting, but I do want to thank you for reconsidering the bid to sell the Wilkes Farm to a local resident, and I'm very pleased that you were able to come to that decision. I know that this local resident will restore the Wilkes Farmstead to its original glory. I want to thank you and commend you for the wisdom to come to a solution for the Wilkes Farm and the Gulf Road property. That reflects the will of the town. I want to thank you so much. I believe in my heart that you will be proud of the direction we are now headed. When, when you see the Wilkes Farm restored, I, I, I know that you will be glad we made this decision. I'm sorry I don't have any candy canes to give out, as the gentleman around Christmas time had, but I still wish to express my sincere thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Harry, you want to speak?
Yeah. I mean, after that remark. No candy canes, Harry? No candy? Gee, I mean, after that remark, I do not have any candy canes tonight, I apologize. I should have brought cough drops, though. Here's what I'm here tonight about. Has anybody seen the February issue of Hartford Magazine? Hmm? No, huh? On page twenty-eight, Close Up Neighborhood, Weathersfield. Wow! How about that? I was, well, I read it, and let me read my letter to the editor of that magazine to explain why I'm here. I was very pleased to see that Hartford Magazine February issue Close Up Neighborhood featured my town, Weathersfield. However, I was stopped cold by the first sentence, which is totally inaccurate. You state that Weathersfield may not be the oldest town in Connecticut. Windsor beat it to the punch by a year. That's not right. No, we are the first settlement. In nineteen eighty-four, I was on the Weathersfield three hundred and fiftieth Anniversary Committee. Town manager was in Kansas. No smile? Okay. He seldom smiles. He seldom smiles. Okay, excuse me. And at that time, and prior to that, I'd heard a lot of comments about Windsor being the first town, not Weathersfield, and I said, I'm going to investigate this. And I gathered as many books that I could find and read them. If what I read proved that Windsor was, that's how it would be. But it isn't. Weathersfield is. Okay, let me go on with my letter. Here's what I'm saying. I would like to set the record straight. In sixteen thirty-three, a group from Massachusetts ventured down the river and stopped at what is now Windsor, where they erected a trading post and returned to Massachusetts. That same year, John Alden, with a few friends from the Massachusetts Bay Colony, struck out overland to explore the territory. Before their petition was approved by the Massachusetts General Court, ten adventurers led by John Alden arrived here in Weathersfield in sixteen thirty-four and established a settlement, not a trading post. That is, a group of homes where they stayed. I will concede that Windsor had the first trading post, but it's indisputable that Weathersfield is the first settlement and the oldest town in Connecticut. I would appreciate your printing this letter, so your, your readers will not be misinformed. I guess that's all I have to say. I know it's a friendly disagreement that we have with Windsor. Whoever gets the bragging rights is at stake. Our town isn't going to change, Windsor's not going to change, they're both fine towns, but we're first. Thank you.
Thank you for standing up for us, Harry.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. Some earlier speakers had mentioned about the real estate market. I'm glad to hear it's improving. Unfortunately, when I look at the newspaper, I don't really see much. Go back to the holiday season, there was a, all of a sudden, a fifteen or twenty homes that sold, and from there on, it's been dribs and drops. Yeah, it'd be ten, ten this week, two of them are banks that are selling properties for low kind of prices. So, I, I really hope it picks up, because I know there's a tremendous amount of people that want to get out of here, and they want to see the market work upwards, so they don't have to sit around for six months or a year or two years just to see their homes sell. So, I hope, I hope it does happen. There was also some mention regarding the slides that were up here before, regarding whatever. There was one comment that was made about encouraging business development in Weathersfield. Just the other day, I, I got a, I got a message where up at the state capitol, they have a bill up there that some state representative had put in to. to tax small businesses that have cash, liquid cash on hand. I mean, you know, talk about being friendly. Small business has cash on hand and now it's taxable. You know, there's gonna be a bill they're gonna talk about passing. Who, who would even consider putting something like that forward? You know? I mean, it's just ironic that you want business to come here, but you're hammering them when they, I don't know. I'd like to mention also that you put $2 million or you're putting $2 million in a trust. And in reading the article and listening to what was said about it, it indicates that the fund would be generating something like 4% or 5% of annual capital from this $2 million. I mean, that's a pretty good rate of return for this day and age. Maybe you could tell us where we could put some money? Is that the local bank? What do they give us? A quarter of a percent? So, I just wanted to mention that. I mean, that seems like a mighty high amount of percent. For putting it in somewhere, it's this, you're not putting it in the stock market. You're putting it into something that is very secure. And when you do that, they don't pay a lot of money, that's all. So, I don't know if you're going to really be able to generate that kinda return. I hope you do, but we'll see. I'd like to also talk about this article that was in the paper. You know, I don't, I don't see very many articles in the Hartford Current or other publications about Weathersfield, but there was this one about town officials don't reduce car tax. And, you know, there's a number of people that were quoted in here. I was very surprised, you know, if they reduce, eliminate the car tax on vehicles, and I suspect the idea of the $28,000 valuation means those businesses out here that have trucks, those are considered cars for tax purposes, I would think. So, they're all taxable. Those big trucks cost $50,000, $100,000, so, I mean, versus an automobile. But I was very surprised to see that Weathersfield was reported in here as getting like $5.6 million in vehicle taxes annually. And if this tax is eliminated, you'll lose $5.4 million. So, that means you're getting, if this goes through, you're only gonna be able to collect taxes on $200,000 a year. It's, you know, it's a rough number. And, and, you know, that really puts a bind on, on the, on the town, but of course, you can shift it elsewhere. And I'm, and I'm one who would never wanna pay a tax. So, I would be very much in favor of seeing this tax disappear. The only problem in this is, there's several problems. One is those who rent, who own a car. A car, you know, if they rent, you know, the normal person has a car that's worth not a lot of money, but now, if this thing eliminates the tax, they pay no tax. They have no skin on the sidewalk. They leave nothing on the sidewalk. They have no tax at all. Only their landlord will end up getting a much higher tax bill in the end, and they'll pay in some other fashion through their rent as extra, extra money. So, I, I really got a problem with this whole issue. Everybody should pay. Unfortunately, Mr. Romney, who was running, what's his, what was his first name, Mitt Romney? He had mentioned 47% of the people don't pay taxes. This will just help more, make that percentage higher. And, and, and those, and, and all the producers, there'll be a heck of a lot less producers that have to pay taxes. And I really think it's quite a, quite a wild shift. But what really caught my eye on this issue was at the very last paragraph. And it says, "Manusa meanwhile said that the reduction in the income", oh, he said that reductions in the income and sales taxes would be more effective tax relief for middle-class families. I read that, and I says, this guy's never talked about middle-class families and the tax problems. Never once! The only people he talks about is his special interest friends that he has to take care of. And I'm reading this, and I says, and then the next sentence goes on, "That would force the state to reduce their budget", force them to reduce their budget, which really should be their priority rather than negatively impacting the towns." Again, how many years have you been on here? Three years, four years? I don't even know. I haven't seen you come in with a reduced budget. Yet you're telling the governor, that's what you should do.
You don't like that suggestion?
Practice what you preach.
You don't like that suggestion?
No, no, what you should've said, this is what you should've said.
But you don't like that suggestion, is that what I'm asking?
This is what you, this is what you should've said. "A reduction of property and car taxes in Weathersfield would be more effective tax relief for middle-class families." Good statement, and that's what we should do in Weathersfield. Further on, I'm using the same words you used in that, in that article. "That would force Weathersfield to reduce their budget, which should be their priority rather than negatively impacting the taxpayers at large." How could you make your statements in here when you haven't even done that? You know? Next.
Mr. Young, can you summarize?
Yeah, I'll summarize real quickly. There was this other article, "Next Crisis, the Phishon Phone", and, and here, here it is. Daniel Malloy, he, he, he makes this comment. He says, "For 22 years, we had no net job growth in a country where 48 states shared the creation of 23 million jobs." Think about that. All 48 states, I know there's 50 states, but, or 51. But there's 50 states, but they created 23 million jobs, but Connecticut had a net zero over 22 years. Doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting different results doesn't work. I, I, you know, he's correct. Even, even this last year, there was zero growth in employment in this state. And we, we spent millions and billions of dollars, yes. And something needs to be done here. You need to find a way to reduce your taxes to bring companies here and set up shop and employ people. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Rue?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. George A. Rue, 956 Cloverdale Circle. Interesting meeting, learned a little bit. Couple of comments that spontaneous. On the plan of development, on one of the charts, it was entitled "Plan Consistency". You know what I noticed on that chart? There was that little green dot down at the southern end of the town. And you know what that was? Cloverdale Pond. And I'm glad to see that maybe you'll give that a little bit of attention because it doesn't get a lot of, it doesn't seem to get too much attention from our elected leaders. And it does, it degrades the quality of life in our neighborhood. Enough said, but I had a chuckle at that, and I couldn't let that go by. On another interesting note, we had a big storm. There was a lot of snow. And I have no complaints. I think, I don't know what was, what happened, but there seemed to be a mindset in the people who were pushing snow around, and I must presume it came from the leadership. And if it didn't, then we've got a lot of good people working for us, and perhaps we've got both. But one of the things I noticed was, we seemed to be satisfied with streets that were a little bit narrower and didn't take all that snow which was projected six feet into the street from each side and dump it back into driveways like my own and the widows and the other people that I've seen, who then would have to go out and put themselves at risk. We're very good at putting notices on the board about, don't dump snow in the street because it's gonna cause an accident or something. But by doing what was done this time, they didn't dump it all back in the sidewalk, and I didn't have to go out and shovel it. And that was good, and I thank, I thank whoever's idea it was. I think it's a good idea, and I would, I would keep it up. On another note, you all know I've got this little guy, my great-grandson. He's about 30 something pounds and 34 inches tall these days. And he's as cute as a button, and he's as important as all hell to me. I'll never see him finish in the school system of this town. I just, it's not gonna happen. And it brings to my mind those 20 kids down in Sandy Hook, were a resource and precious children, just gone. It's a problem that's significant within the country, and you all know that. And what I'm bringing up really is an article that was called to my attention about the police chief recommending a school security officer. I think my overall comments, and I wanna make a few, is go cautious. Go cautious. As I read this, certain things jumped out at me. One of them was, I almost sensed a knee-jerk reaction to, we gotta do something. I've seen some real knee-jerk reactions on, on TV, you know? We're gonna put a cop in every school, one cop in every school in his little armor suit and his AK-47 probably in a helmet. Or we're gonna put moats around schools. Or some of the more bizarre ones were, give guns to all the teachers. Really bizarre stuff. And I would, I would urge that you think carefully as you approach the security of the schools, and there is much that can be done. There's no question about that. There is much that can be done. But as I looked at this and as I read the paper, and after all I had to go on at the moment, I didn't do a lot of research on it, you see large tracts of land having to be secure. And I sense, I sense, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, and if I'm wrong, so be it. But think about it, and at least I hope I've called it to your attention. We seem to think that by putting a cop in a large tract of land, one cop, that we're gonna make children safe. You're never gonna make children safe. You will make them a bit safer, perhaps, but never safe. And if, as I recall back to my younger days, where in a way I might've been the cop on guard duty on some motor pool or some other perimeter in the Army, that wasn't done with one guy doing who knows what. And as I think about even the, the whole concept, to think that one cop could have done something in the Lonza case in Sandy Hook, by the time they get there, 20 kids are dead. So, I think you have to think of ways of tightening up security, not by building moats, and as the article said, we don't wanna make prisons out of them. I'm not a proponent of having cops walking around the schools with AK-47s and scaring kids after death. But there are things that have to be done. And I had a chat with a, interesting chat with a principal of a high school. He's a retired principal of a high school, prestigious school in the area here, was. And his reaction was, it's all about making jobs for cops. That was his point, not mine, but I thought, interesting point. And he proposed, he suggested what might be required is to have a presence of police, which we've got now, which sometimes I see them sitting around in construction sites practically half asleep. This was a Rocky Hill cop that I saw asleep the other day on Silas Dean Highway. Or interfering with traffic on Maple Street, which I saw today for about a half an hour because some cop had some guy in the middle of the street and you had to cross into the other. That's another problem. But policemen on a regular basis patrolling the town, patrolling the school sites, either on a random basis, but very noticeably so, it would seem to me, would easily fall into what cops are supposed to be doing, what the police is supposed to be doing. All that I got out of this, and Emmett said it's gonna cost $100,000. I didn't know whether that was $100,000 per cop, $100,000 in total. I just didn't know, and it wasn't very clear. But my counsel is, don't have knee-jerk reactions. Think carefully about what might really enhance the security and the well-being of all of our children and my little great-grandson. So, it's not a criticism. I hope it's a point for you to think about. End of comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, next on the agenda is council reports. Are there any reports of committees? Councilor Drake?
School Projects Building Committee met last week, basically the high school renovation committee. Couple issues there. Design is substantially done. Looks like they're near the end of it. They expect to have their first, I guess you could say, final costing done by mid-March, so we'll see where they are in this whole thing. Two issues they're working on right now is they still have, I'm gonna say somewhat a little bit unknown, some environmental issues they're dealing with. Could be no money, could be a little money, but it's a budget item they're still working on. And the other thing, like what George is saying, they spent the last, looks like the last two, three weeks working hard on changes to security due to some of the issues. And that's a, if I was gonna say anything from a guy just looking from the outside in March 15th, that, that could be affect their budget a little bit. They may have to take it for somewhere else, but they're looking at somewhere about 100-something video cameras, changing the vestibules, the doors, the glass. If you recall, the media center had all glass, top to bottom, and now they've changed the bottom to be brick. I mean, there's a lot, if you look at all this, it's a lot of small things, but it could add up to some significant money. But same sense, they have to do it, so they've been working on that. So, we'll, we'll see in mid-March, and we'll see where they end up. But anyways, I think they're going pretty well so far, so things are on track.
Deputy Mayor?
If I may, thank you. We had a meeting on February 5th, a public safety meeting to discuss school security and the, also the student guardian program for school buses. In attendance was myself, Counselor Dre, Counselor Hurley, Counselor Roberts, Mr. Bridges, Rayanne Palmer, the Chief of Police, James Sutran, Mike Emmett from the school, Superintendent of Schools, Fred Bushy, and former police officer Tom Dillon. I think I got everybody. If I missed anybody, my apologies. And in the discussion, we had discussed just generalities of what we will be doing going forward as far as adding some school, you know, safety to the school systems and, and to take a proactive approach. And not, not to jump into anything just because we have to, but, but not to take a waiting game either as far as waiting to see what the state of Connecticut is gonna do. So, the chief and others came up with some, some suggestions, and we're gonna be meeting again in the next couple of weeks to discuss them. And one was, one thing I brought away from this was that whatever we're doing as far as different locking systems for the doors that the teachers could do immediately or securing the building a little bit better is to, is to add time. As you said, people in the audience said, you know, you're never gonna make things 100% better or make, and make anyone totally safe. But, you know, to add some time to get other people to a facility, and not only the schools, we also discussed the all-public buildings, the library, our town hall, the Board of Education building. That, that, there has to be a sense of some security as far as when people, especially the public is there, that they could feel a little bit safe. So, we're discussing quite a few different options, and there'll be more coming out in the future. One with the schools was a, from the police department, was a school safety liaison team. And in response to the Sandy Hook Elementary tragedy, the Weathersfield Police Department is creating a school safety liaison team. This team will be comprised of a group of selected officers who want to be more actively involved in the safety of the schools and the mentoring of the children. in the safety of the schools and the mentoring of the children within the community. The general concept behind the creation of the school safety liaison team is that every school will be assigned an individual officer to act as a direct liaison between the school's administration, faculty, parents, and students. A general overview of the school liaison team and the anticipated duties, responsibilities, and commitment level that will be expected for any officer will be discussed in the future. But some of the programs, it'll consist of a proposal that in no way shall be interpreted or suggested as a means of replacing the need for immediate and emergency situations. Current 911 and school emergency policies and protocols will remain in effect and will continue to be reinforced as a proper method for emergency requests for immediate police service. The following proposal will in no way shall be interpreted or suggested as a means of replacing the current juvenile detective, SRO, or DARE officers. So these are just some of the things that they're thinking of doing, you know, how to implement these and going along, and we'll bring forward more as we get as we meet again in the next couple of weeks to fine-tune some of this, but. You know, I see your point, Mr. Rue, and I'm sure others probably feel the same way you do, but things do have to be done. I think we have to take a proactive approach to this, so that's just one small step, I think, in the right direction. The other was, we discussed the student guardian program for school buses, where they're gonna be putting cameras on the school buses, so when the stop signs go out on the school buses, it'll track any people going through and not stopping for the red lights on the school buses. In fact, tonight, we're gonna be voting on that, one of the motions that we have. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If anyone else from the committee wants to add anything to that, while I'm speaking of that, I feel free. I think I covered just about everything that we discussed there, so. Thank you.
Other reports? Councilors?
Yes, thank you. Budget and Finance Committee met today, and in review of our financial statements, our financial reports through December, if the current trend continues through the rest of the fiscal year, we should see revenue and expenses favorable to budget, and if there's no unexpected expenses that are incurred, we should have a surplus of close to $200,000. The other item on the agenda was the OPEB trust, and how we're gonna be funding that, and that is on the agenda for tonight. But one of the reasons, somebody had mentioned the rate of return on that fund is because that initial funding, that asset allocation is gonna be, you know, sixty percent equities, five percent REITs, and thirty-five percent fixed income assets. So that's all I have to report.
Other committee reports? Okay, thank you. Council comments? Any comments from councils?
I just want to just discuss the snowstorm we had the other day. I just want to commend the town manager, assistant town manager, and the Physical Service Department. I think for the monumental job that came and the amount of equipment we have, I think they did a pretty outstanding job. There were some bumps in the road, there were some streets that were behind and getting plowed out and all, but with the amount of snow that we got over a ten-hour period, I think they did very well for themselves, and compared to other towns, and especially the city of Hartford was a disaster for days to come. And I think one town, the schools finally went back to school today, so all in all, we did very well. And I was gonna do a top ten of some of the calls I got from complaints, but there's just a couple of them that stood out, so maybe we'll get a laugh out of these, but. Some of them were, one gentleman called me up and asked why his street was six inches narrower than the next street over as far as plowing went. And I said, you mean six feet wider? And he goes, no, six inches. I went out with a yardstick and measured it, and the next street over was six inches wider. He wanted to know why that was the case, and why his street was always plowed first and not later, so maybe the guys are doing a better job plowing, but that was one. Another person called me and said that they were going up Wells Road, and it was only one lane, and it was only the left-hand turn lane, so the person had to turn left because they couldn't go straight because they were in the left-hand turn lane. It took them an extra half hour to get home. That one, I just couldn't figure out for the life of me. And the last one was many calls of why Village Pizza wasn't open. It was the only place around, and their children were hungry, and they didn't know where to go for food. So those are some of the calls I received from the storm. That's it. Oh, two others, I'm sorry. Highland Street, Mr. Manager, you, I had asked before about the staging area and what was going on there, and I noticed going up there that they've been leveling off a lot of the soil now, and I'm just concerned that, you know, if any of that soil's getting into the stream that's nearby, and maybe you could have Mr. Turner or somebody check that out, please, to let us know, because I know that stream feeds the ponds down at the swimming ponds. And also the beaver situation up at the 1860 Reservoir. Have you been getting any calls on that or anything being done as far as the beaver population?
Yes.
The dams that are being built? Is that being taken care of, or things happen? Okay. If you could just maybe enlighten us on that a little bit, from your next manager's report, I'd appreciate it.
I'll cover it in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Roberts?
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilor Drake for the reports he gives on the Building Committee, because they're very thorough, and he keeps us up to date, and there are quite a lot of meetings involved with that, and so thank you for keeping us informed in a timely manner.
Any others? I just want to report that we did receive a letter from a resident. Everyone received. It would just take some time, and if you want to bring anything forward for further discussion, we can do that, and it was in regards to the Constitution. So if anybody has any, would like to discuss it, we can put it back on the agenda for some discussion. And Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Several things this evening. The budget and its proposal from the Governor, talking with our finance staff, given, if the bill on the car tax is still in play by the time we have to produce the manager's budget, we will probably produce not three separate budgets, but at least three separate summaries. One, the main budget will be based upon still being able to tax motor vehicle. The feedback we're getting from legislators, at least our own legislators, is that that bill has some problems. So we're gonna put the base budget together based upon having the property tax on the vehicles. We'll also provide summaries if the vehicle tax goes away, and the entire amount that would have raised is shifted then to the property tax. What that would do to the mill levy, and then what, how much we would have to reduce the budget if there was a desire not to shift that to the property tax. So there'll be three separate, basically, budget calculations for the presentation. I've met with Senator Ferrer as the Finance Chair last week with cost, and informed them of the issues. The first-elect woman from Weston was there as our prime spokesperson, as well as the first-electman from Old Lime. And there'll be other hearings as we go along on that issue. The other issue with the revenue sharing proposals from the Governor, he is correct, that he's, total dollars, towns are kept whole. I don't think, from a Weathersfield point of view, we have enough uses for the different pots he's mixed and matched with where we can come out even on the general revenue sharing proposals. It does limit the flexibility, because it takes money away from what we would have put in the general fund, i.e. the Pequot money, and moves it to LoSIP, which is more of a capital improvement fund. But given that we've always transferred money from the general fund to the capital improvement fund, replacing that general fund transfer with LoSIP funds, it's a wash for us. So I think there's enough in there for us to make use of and come out even. And there's a little bit of benefit to the schools, so. The big issue for us is gonna be the motor vehicle tax, and the impact it has on the overall mill levy. As Peter's mentioned, I did have a chance to visit the Art Institute. Phenomenal, phenomenal operation there. The kitchen equipment alone was close to a million dollars, just the kitchen equipment. It's two professional-grade kitchens, graphic design, computerized and manual graphic design, fine arts, very impressive operation, so. Hopefully, we can get, once they open for business, we'll get other tours in there, but that's gonna be a tremendous community asset. They offer four-year degrees, full four-year degree in some form of art, so it's a tremendous deal for the town and the community. Morrison Avenue, Gus is correct. At fifteen feet off the intersection, it's 240 feet. At ten feet off the intersection, it's 380 feet. So both of us are right. Depending on where you start. So we're gonna meet on this. Mike did a full report on the measurement, the new measurement. They actually asked today for an evaluation, the impact on the snowbanks and the site distance issues today. So we're gonna be meeting on that to see if that changes the outcomes with the warrants, so. We're looking into that. The trust fund, as Stathi said, there's a mixture of equities and fixed incomes, fixed income products we can invest that money in. It's separate from a bank account, and that's the benefit of the trust. It allows the town to invest in different things other than just a straight bank account. So that will be, that's where the four percent comes from. And actually, under this particular statute, there's a limit on what items can be used in the trust, and it's more towards fixed income and governmental assets. The beavers, we've got a DEP licensed trapper in there. We believe there's four beavers in there, a family of four. He has trapped two already, and two more to go. We're leaving the things in place at this time. That way, if there's disturbance of the dams now, that may cause it more difficult to trap, so we're gonna leave it in place until we trap the beavers out, and then clean up the site. So we've been in there about six weeks with a trapper.
So what do you do with these beavers after you trap them?
It's a DEP licensed trapper, and he takes them. And happy to answer any questions?
Anything for the Town Manager?
No.
Just, Jeff, I just want to reiterate John's comments about the storm cleanup, and I was wondering if there was anything that you want to add in terms of the hours and the work effort and...
Well, I just want to commend Physical Services. Not only Physical Services, first and foremost, because they stayed out all night. By one o'clock, the state had pulled their trucks off the road. We ended up plowing people to hospitals, got them to doctors, got them out of their houses, got the police to different residences, got the ambulance to different places, the fire department. We stayed out all night. Just a tremendous effort on their part. The police officers, the firefighters, the ambulance company, all worked all night long. It was just an amazing effort, amazing effort, so. If there's someone to thank, it's that group of people, so. And for those of you who haven't cleared your sidewalks, please do. There's probably about a hundred of them left out there.
And hydrants.
And hydrants. Starting Friday, actually, starting Wednesday, engineering was out there making lists to give to the police. Starting Friday, we were causing the sidewalk to be cleared, and the property owners will get a bill or lien on their property for clearing that sidewalk. And that started Friday. So please clear your sidewalks. We've made contact with, you know, if we knew, and we called them, and most of it got done, but there's still several out there that need to be finished, so.
Thank you. Dolores, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is council action. We have some resignations. Councilor Montneyry?
Thank you, Mayor. Two resignations, Teresa and Wayne Urbansky, both from 46 Marmore Court, Weathersfield, Connecticut, under the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Dolores, please make sure that you send them a letter of thanks for serving. Thank you. There's no unfinished business under 3A Dial-A-Ride Grant. Authorization to apply for and accept if awarded a grant for expanded medical appointment transportation service. Can I have a motion?
Motion to authorize a town manager to apply for and to accept the state matching grant program for elderly and disabled demand responsive transportation Dial-A-Ride expansion grant in the amount of $31,773 for Weathersfield and $89,436 total, and to negotiate and sign a memorandum of understanding with the towns of Newington and Rocky Hill to provide a tri-town medical transportation service.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is an annual grant we receive that provides enhanced Dial-A-Ride services. It's a hundred percent grant, not a match. There's no match required with the town. We share this resource with Rocky Hill and Newington, and Dr. Stillwell is here this evening to answer any questions.
Do councilors have any questions? Councilor Cock?
Just one question to follow up maybe, Jeff, on some of your earlier comments, but does this grant program get affected at all by the proposed budget?
I'm afraid the answer's a big maybe. We don't know. They've told us to prepare the grant in the amount that was funded last year, and, you know, until the legislature gets a budget, we really don't know.
But the proposed budget would fund it similarly?
Yes. It would maintain basically the exact same level of services that we're currently providing.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
So if they do get cut back, what happens? Is lesser of a service? Is that what?
It doesn't affect our basic service, which is our Monday-through-Thursday service to the core towns. What it might affect is the number of trips on to the outlying towns for medical services. So, and those are Bloomfield, West Hartford, Farmington, and New Britain.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. 3B is the OPEB transfer, authorization to transfer funds to the OPEB trust. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that, well, do they have to be three separate motions that we vote on separately? Or are they all together?
Three.
Make one motion, okay. Motion one is to approve the OPEB funding policy. Motion two is to transfer $3,800,000 of fund balance from the Self-Insurance Reserve Fund, Fund 6001, to the OPEB Trust Fund, Fund 8705. Motion three is to transfer $2,750,000 of fund balance from the Retiree Reserve Fund, Fund 8700, to the OPEB Trust Fund, Fund 8705.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The Budget and Finance Committee, along with a group that will eventually be trustees of the OPEB Trust Fund, have been working on a series of actions and policies to, A, initiate the OPEB Trust Fund, and B, provide for its long-term care and trust oversight. This evening's actions would be to take the money we've had in reserve for the retirees' medical expenses, basically collected from the employees over the last several years as part of payroll deductions, and shift that to the OPEB. In addition, take excess funds from what we call the Active Employees Fund, basically claims dollars we budgeted but didn't spend on claims, and shift that to the OPEB fund to provide a seed of roughly $6.5 million towards fully funding our OPEB obligations. Today, we have an OPEB obligation of roughly $65 million based upon the actuarial assumptions. And so that's your first step, is to transfer those funds. The second step is to adopt the OPEB funding policy, which provides that the town of Weathersfield, which means both the town and the board, combined will fund annually first $200,000 next year. And then for a year, every year after that, adding $200,000 to that amount until we reach what's called the annual required contribution, which will be roughly 10 to 12 years from now. So this year, next budget year, we'll put $200,000 in with the split being 72% town, 28% board. The following year, it will be 400, and then 600, and so on, until we meet the arc, and that's what... And that's what the OPEB funding policy says. The funding policy also provides for responsibilities of the trustee, responsibilities of the custodian, responsibilities of the finance department and staff within the matrix of caring for the OPEB trust. So that's the, in a nutshell, what's being asked of you this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Drake?
Yeah, uh, ten years from now, we'll have a line item of about two million dollars a year to go into this every year on a budget.
Right.
When do you expect that we can, in fact, not do the two million, actually start slowing that down, because, you know, years from now, retirees won't have the healthcare, it'll be more like the private sector. Is there an estimate when that will-
It's beyond our horizon.
It is beyond, it's that far out there.
Yeah.
Okay. But two million a year, we'll do it when we get there.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Now, the, the actuaries have encouraged us to put more in quicker, um, and that would allow us to hit that horizon much sooner, but there's a balance between budgetary capability-
But the first motion to approve this funding policy, I guess we could always make a motion later on to change that, right? If we can't do it, or interest rates are so high at some point that we're making so much money, we don't know what to do with it. We could cut that back.
When we get there, let me know.
But, but I understand, but we're committed to it.
Right, this, this policy can always be amended. The benefit of this policy, it shows, since we haven't met the arc, since we do have the unfunded obligation, this policy is used to show people who buy our bonds and give us our credit, that we're committed to it, and we have a plan. Um, one of the other el- other elements of this plan is, if at the end of a fiscal year there is significant dollars left over in what we call the Active Self-Reserve Fund, or Self-Insurance Fund, leaving a certain percentage according to policy, roughly ten percent, or three months' worth of claims, we can move that to the OPEB and enhance the contribution that year as well, in addition to the two-hundred thousand. So it provides flexibility on how we can fund this as well. But you're right, someday, just like, at one time, the pension was that way, there was no requirement from the town. Hopefully, OPEB will get there someday as well.
I just have some vision that we're gonna have a good inflationary period coming up in the future, which may wash a lot of this away for us.
Well, a lot of the obligations over time will dissipate because we no longer, new employees aren't elderly for ten, ten police officers.
Any other questions of the town manager?
No, just today's point, and the, and town manager can confirm it, but, I mean, theory is that, once that, it's fully funded, that OPEB fund, the Self-Insurance Fund, would go away. Um, and, and the OPEB-
No, the two million dollars are here.
When will the two million dollars, maybe cutting that back, is there any vision?
Well, yeah, that we're not sure, but I'm saying, at the end of the day, when it's fully funded, it'll be self-sustaining, so.
Right.
That's what I'm hearing.
Any other questions?
I, I just have one. Um, it says here, "The policy further suggests the town budget annual appropriations to the OPEB trust through, through the annual budget process beginning in two thousand fourteen in the amount of two-hundred thousand, then will increase in subsequent years by two-hundred thousand each year." So, okay, never mind, I answered my own question.
Ten years is getting to my-
Right, I thought it was two-hundred thousand plus an additional two-hundred thousand in the same year, but it's not. Right, just two-hundred thousand per year.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
In the trust document that was created, we added two, we added a Board of Trustees for the, the OPEB, and we included within that two, uh, citizens of the community to serve. Uh, the trust document doesn't really flesh out how they're appointed or their terms of office, so we'll be bringing back an amendment to the trust ordinance that fleshes out those details for the council to consider, um, probably sometime in April.
I, I just clarify, this is what Jerry said, and make sure I understand it. Jerry, it's two-hundred, then four-hundred, then six-hundred, eight-hundred, eventually in ten years, will we have a two-million-dollar line item?
Correct.
Right, so it's not two-hundred every year, it'll be, ten years, if we're still here, we'll have a two-million-dollar, every year, it'll be two-million bucks.
Okay, it is decreasing.
Yeah.
Yes, every year, it will increase by two-hundred thousand until-
It's already the first time, okay.
Now, I mean, we have an arc of like six million dollars, but one of the, the, the amount we pay currently for retiree health benefits is part of that annual required contribution. So we're already getting credit for like, like, two-point-nine million dollars' worth of that arc. So we don't have to come up with six-and-a-half million, we actually have to come up with three million, something like that. So, we're already spending roughly two-point-nine million on retiree health.
Okay. Um, next on the agenda is three C, the Agreement with Student Guardian Authorization to Enter Into An Agreement With Student Guardian To Supply And Monitor Cameras Mounted On The Exterior Of School Buses. A motion?
Motion to approve the SG System Bus Cooperative Agreement by the amount, by and among Redflex Guardian, Inc., DBA Student Guardian, Town of Weathersfield, Connecticut, Town of Weathersfield, Connecticut Public Schools, and Town of Weathersfield, Connecticut Police Department, with changes as proposed by Town Attorney.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm sure, uh, the Deputy Mayor may have some comments, uh, due to the, the nature of the meeting we had. Dana Meinke is here this evening from Student Guardian to answer questions, but, uh, the Board of Education and the police chief realized we had a problem with people passing stop-school buses, and sought a solution, and the Student Guardian program was, uh, determined to be a, an answer to one, to that issue, and we had a public safety meeting, and perhaps, Deputy Mayor, you wanna talk about that?
Oh, actually, maybe, would you mind coming up to the podium? Thank you. Actually, I think the town manager really summed it up well, but, um, if, if you could possibly just give the audience just a little oversight of how, how it's going to work and, um, uh, uh, the, the cost to the town and things of that nature, that would be great.
Of course. I'm Dana Meinke, I'm here representing Student Guardian, which is school bus safety program. And what we do is we work with the town and with law enforcement to put cameras on the outside of the school buses to monitor for legal stop-on violations. It's a no-cost program, not to the school, not to the town, not to residents. Um, we're able to put the technology on the buses for no cost, and as tickets get paid, um, it funds, it funds the program, and you're actually able to net a little bit of revenue per each ticket paid. The, um, the ticket for a, for this kind of violation is four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Um, the municipality will keep eighty percent of that for every ticket paid, and then of that, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars goes back to the vendor to play, pay for the program and the equipment, monitoring services, and maintenance. Um, we're working in fifteen cities in the, in the state of Connecticut, and we're seeing great results. Um, we're seeing a little bit of a deterrent in states where we've been, or in towns where we've been working for a few years now, and, uh, overall, it's working well, and it's a great safety initiative.
And, and the implementation will be, uh, when, if, if we vote for this tonight, when will we start having those on the, on the school buses?
Um, well, we would do a thorough route analysis process first, so that would include driver surveys, um, we would co- coordinate with the Transportation Department, and then we would use temporary camera, cameras to monitor the buses for a period of time so that we can identify the buses which have the biggest problem. Um, we would anticipate loading anywhere from ten to fifty percent of the fleet, um, and it would, I mean, we could have the first bus loaded within two weeks of the contract being approved.
Thank you. I'm, I'm set. Anyone else?
Councilor Drake?
Yeah, how do we, uh, back off from this if we unhappy? 'Cause you, obviously, there's a lot of financial commitment by you guys. I'm sorry, how do we back off from this if, uh, we decide we don't wanna do this two, three years from now? I mean, there's, obviously, there's a lot of financial commitment by you guys to do this. Is there, what's our commitment to this? Is it a ten-year thing, five, I mean, I don't see it in here.
It's a, um, five-year term.
Okay, five years, so we can sit back in five years and decide?
Yep.
If we wanna do something, okay.
So are you using LPR cameras for this?
LPR.
License Plate Recognition, so how are we?
Um, no, it's, it's done by a human. So we have live monitors that watch the cameras as the buses are making their stops, and as they see cars go by, they isolate the plate, identify what the characters are, and upload it for police review.
So, okay, so the live monitors, you mean, are on the buses or via remote-
We have a central monitoring station.
Central monitoring station, okay.
Yep.
Then who's doing the actual collections? Is it the town, or is it your company?
The fine money, uh, follows the exact same flow as any other citation, so on a quarterly basis, the monies will go back to the municipality, will submit an invoice for the number of tickets issued, and will be reimbursed that way.
And so noticing, is that done by your company, or is that by the town as well?
Um, by the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Roberts?
Can you go over the numbers again? You, you said the, the fifth, the fine is what?
The fine is, uh, it's technically four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, um, but fifteen of that is used for court administration fees.
Okay.
Um, so the percentages are based on a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. It is written so that eight percent goes to the general fund, twelve percent to the special transportation fund, and then eighty percent goes to municipality. And then of that, two-thirty-five to the vendor, one-twenty, one-twenty-five to the municipality.
Um, I looked at the slide, um, presentation, and it was interesting to see the statistics from other communities in the number of violations.
Yep.
It was, I was very surprised to see that high of a number of cars that would pass a school bus, um, enough to get ticketed.
Yeah, it was surprising.
Yes.
This is so frequent.
Yeah.
Right.
We're seeing about a state average of one pass per bus per day, and nationally, it's about point-eight-eight.
Wow.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Of course.
Um, we have no bids under-
Oh, oh, I have-
Oh, I'm sorry, three D.
Uh, motion to waive the Showmobile rental fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the Hartford Marathon Foundation Sandy Hook Run for Families, which will donate a hundred percent of the proceeds to the Sandy Hook School Support Fund.
And a second?
Second.
Um, Rayanne, can you introduce this, please?
The Parks and Recreation Department had a request for use of the Showmobile by the Hartford, um, Marathon Foundation. They're, they're sponsoring a, um, found, a Sandy Hook Run for Families, for which the proceeds will all go to the fund to help support the families from the Sandy Hook tragedy. So essentially, they're asking you to waive the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fees for the Showmobile rental, and the labor to set the Showmobile up will be, um, taken out of our Showmobile fund and absorbed, so it won't cost any general fund tax dollars.
Any questions of the Assistant Town Manager? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Um, thank you, Councilor Hurley, um, for keeping me whole here. For, for, um, bids, we have none. Number five, we have no ordinances, resolutions for introduction minutes from the special meeting of February second. Can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, any corrections, additions, deletions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. Um, and the minutes of, what was it, the special meeting on February fourth?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. And the regular meeting minutes for February fourth, two thousand thirteen. Have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions?
I, I have a correction. On page six, under my comments, it was, um, the amount should be about halfway down in the paragraph, or a little bit more, but it says, "He stated that, that, he stated that his major issue is that the two-hundred-and-five dollars, it should be the two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar, five-thousand taxpayer dollars." Makes a little bit of a difference.
Little.
Little bit.
Any other corrections? Okay, um, all those in favor of the amended minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Um, public comments, are there members of the public wishing to speak?
George A. Rue, again. Uh, nine fifty-six, Cloverdale Circle. Uh, I just wanna make a few additional comments on, on my earlier ones on the school. I agree with John. A proactive approach is required. There's no question in my mind about that, all right? The, the point that I wanna make sure is that we approach that proactive report from some pragmatic, with a questioning attitude, to make doggone sure that we don't get panicked into reacting as a, as an elected, uh, elected body by our police officials or our school officials, who think they got the cure to all of these problems. A couple of the things that I had alluded to, that some of these harebrained schemes I see on TV, on the news, coming from the Congress and various state legislators around the country, uh, the, uh, they seem to fall into the category of doing things that are the least effective, in my judgment, okay? Go looking for all of the people with mental health problems, because then we're gonna find them and we're gonna eliminate the problem. That's like looking for a needle in a haystack. Either you're gonna find so many of those people, you won't know what to do with them, okay? So there is real question, and, again, my reaction is that's not an uncommon way for many levels of government to react, to go after the least effective and the least controversial or whatever, I don't know, but be cautious in that regard. You probably won't be able to identify those that are dangerous. How many times have you recently read where policemen go around, like this recent case in California? Theoretically, they're very stable, but they're not really, and many of them are not. So you wanna be very careful when you, if you get sucked into that kind of thinking. I mentioned already, people have said, "Well, we need more guns." And I heard a guy on the, on the news earlier today, he said, "If everybody, if every person out there is gonna come in and shoot up the place, he knows there's a good guy inside there with a gun, he's not gonna do that." Well, people that are not familiar with the use of weapons do more harm to themselves than are a greater threat than if they didn't have a gun. So just keep that in the mind, in your back of your mind as a possibility, okay? Fundamentally, this person thinks we have too damn many guns in this country. And maybe some of you are NRA members, or you think that everybody ought to have a gun, and if everybody's gotta have a gun, make doggone sure you get a license for it, or your background check it, or you get a license like you need to drive a car, or to have a dog, or all of the other things you need a license for. I think therein, and that, when a gun is taken out of commission and put away someplace, either in a buyback, however, that's one less opportunity for someone who is deranged to go in and shoot up whatever he's, he or she is gonna shoot up, okay? So, be careful in adding a lot of additional costs, and I don't usually agree with Mr. Cassio, but he did raise that question in the, at least in the article that was in the paper. And anything you do is not gonna guarantee everybody being a hundred percent safe. And one other point, a couple of others as they come to my mind, is, Newington does it, so we should do it. We don't know if Newington's doing the right thing. And yet, that's always the, that's always the plaintiff plea, plea of government often. This other town is spending more money on schools, so we should spend more money on schools. They're doing this, and we should do that. It may be the right thing to do, it may not be the right thing to do, but think about it. Think it very carefully, because the decisions that you will make can have a tremendous impact on the lives, potential lives, of a lot of very innocent kids. I'm upset. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Good evening again. Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. Um, I'd like to go back to the, I'm glad tonight that the, uh, town manager spoke about the state budget, 'cause I've been following that, especially the municipal aid portion. And, uh, you know, I keep, I, I, I keep running tallies, 'cause I get information from them on all the towns. And, of course, getting that municipal aid information, plugging that in, as well as the next couple of years going out, it's a good tracking as to what in the world is going on here. And it does appear that, you know, this particular year that we're in right now, we took a pretty big hit from the prior year. Prior year, you had a grand total of running at thirteen million nine hundred thousand dollars from all municipal aid. I suspect, and I have that detailed run report in my hand here, you know, there's FEMA, there's, you know, TURF, or I should say, lights, that you got payment for, to come up with that thirteen million nine hundred thousand, but there isn't a heck of a lot more, which shows that you're not, you didn't get as much. And even your budget shows, your budget shows nine million, nine million six oh eight. But what Malloy is showing here is that we're gonna be getting nine million five seventy-three, a difference of only thirty-five thousand dollars. But the fact is, if last year, we had thirteen million nine hundred thousand dollars in grand total coming from the state, and it looks like this year, you got ninety-five, nine million five hundred thousand, and I'm just talking rough numbers, and I even write down to the penny, but I'm not gonna go down that low. But then the next two years, it's gonna be pretty flat. And, you know, it appears that, as Malloy has indicated, you know, he's making tough decisions. He's putting, you know, the state is making hard decisions and setting priorities. There is no question that local government will need to do the same. And, you know, this past year, you came in with an extra three million dollars, roughly, that you gave the schools, which came out of our pockets, which justify, which signifies that ninety-five, that nine million five hundred thousand versus that thirteen. Granted, that total is really four point three million dollars difference. But the fact is, we're getting less from the state than what we got in the past, and it's considerable. Other towns, other towns like Newington, they're getting less as well. Rocky Hill is getting, they're all getting less. And just today, I got the spreadsheets from Ken Barnes's office, and how he's calculating all of that, which I haven't had time to look at, but I will be looking at it. But the thing is, we need, we need to reduce, I mean, the state of Connecticut is reducing their dollars going out to the towns, because they can't borrow any more money. They're in such dire straits up there. And we need to cut back on our spend. Last year, you went up three million dollars, roughly. And from what this shows, he gave you three million dollars less. He gave you four million dollars less, from what this shows. Granted, I know that there's other payments that come in from the feds and wherever else, that comes in with this thirteen million that you've been getting, but there is a big reduction here, that we should be seeing from you folks on the tax bills that you send out, a big reduction you should be coming in with this year. You didn't do it last year. And the money he's gonna give you, that he gave you this year that we're in right now, the next two years, he's going to be giving you the same, with the exception, the second year, he's gonna pump you up fifty-one million, fifty-one thousand dollars. To me, that's nothing. He reduced you thirty-five thousand, from what your budget book says, to what he's indicating now. But the reason he did that was because he heard you gave that thirty-five thousand dollars away, and he figured, if you have, if you can give thirty-five thousand dollars away of taxpayer money, he took thirty-five thousand more away from us. We lost seventy thousand dollars because of these guys who want lights over at the field. The people, citizens, said we're gonna pay for it. Instead, we took a bad licking for your special interest, and it's, and this is continuing. And this has to stop. And I'm gonna keep reminding you, and you know, Mr. Manuso should come out with some real big drastic reductions this year. He just got done telling the mayor, I'm sorry, the governor of the state of Connecticut, that he should be reducing. You should too. Thank you very much. No, wait a minute, I still have time, don't I?
Sure, take as much time you need.
I wanted to, how about an extra couple moments here, Mayor?
Give him as much time as you need. Got any more darts you wanna throw, too? Go ahead.
Council approves the three-year deal for the teachers. What that's gonna do to us for the next three years is increase, increase, and increase. And it's not just this contract, it's more contracts that you're dealing with, that are gonna be going up. We're never gonna get out of this mess. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, thank you. Good evening.